Twenty-fifth meeting of the Christiansburg Town Council to order. Before we get into the regular meeting, I need a motion to allow Mr. Jenkins and Mr. Wilson to join by phone.
I so moved.
Second.
Motion of second, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hackett.
Aye.
That is for all, thank you. Tim, Casey, can you hear us okay?
Yes, sir.
All right, very good. As we always do when we start our meetings, we start with a moment of reflection. And what I'd like to ask is if you would keep in your thoughts and prayers, the family of Dan Canada, who was a former council member and Planning Commission member, who was the chairman for four years and spent four years after that on the commission, who passed away last week. So if we could take a moment, and of course, any other thoughts for people you have, but if you'd say a special prayer for Dan and his family. Thank you. I'd like for everyone to stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance, and Mrs. Hicks, would you lead the pledge, please?
Pledge of allegiance. With the flag of the starting states of America. To the free public, for which stands one nation, under God, and in the mistletoe of liberty and justice for all.
Under the adjustments to the agenda, I would like a motion to move the presentation scheduled in Roman numeral five to in front of the Planning Commission meeting.
A motion to move.
Got a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Madam Clerk.
Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hackett.
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilman Wilson.
Aye.
Thank you. Any other adjustments to the agenda?
I don't know if it will be an adjustment, but I would like to have Tracy Hamline or somebody from our departments to actually send a copy through an email to Tim, I'm sorry, to Tim Wilson and Casey Jenkins, so they can receive these packages, please.
Well, they will certainly see it. She'll probably send it to them tomorrow, so we will.
I've already sent it to them.
Okay, very good. Thank you. It's a resolution recognizing town employees Joe Oly, Ryan Hubbell, Pete Haslip, and Brandon Turner, and Dr. Larry Cox, who assisted town employees for their response in a cardiac arrest at the Christiansburg Recreation Center. Whereas, town of Christiansburg would like to take this opportunity to recognize town employees Joe Oly, Ryan Hubbell, Pete Haslip, Brandon Turner, and Larry Cox, who assisted. Whereas, the town of Christiansburg recognizes the exceptional effort and initiative each individual relayed during this emergency, and whereas the individuals involved in this situation went above and beyond their regular job duties, as the team worked together to administer CPR and AED to the patron, and whereas town employee Joe Oly and Ryan Hubbell had attended CPR and AED training certifications within two weeks just prior to the incident, and whereas Dr. Larry Cox, a cardiologist, happened to be at Parks and Recreation Center during the emergency, and whereas the town of Christiansburg cannot express enough gratitude owed to these persons for their quick response and how truly valued they are as employees and citizens of the town of Christiansburg, and whereas the individuals involved in this situation worked diligently to save the individual's life, and on behalf of the town of Christiansburg, we would like to thank them for a job well done. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of Christiansburg Town Council recognizes Joe Oly, Ryan Hubbell, Pete Haslip, Brandon Turner, and Dr. Larry Cox, and an honorable mention to Matty Meadows, Rafael Rico, and Sean Stump, as well as the town of Christiansburg, and the town of Christiansburg EMS Fire, Police, and Rescue for their heroic actions on January 31, 2025, and do resolve that these individuals have set the standard of work that we can all aspire to. This motion was passed unanimously on February 25, 2025. I'd like to take a moment, I'd like to introduce Lauren Dudley, who's the chief executive officer of Lewis Gill Hospital Montgomery. She's here tonight to also recognize these efforts of our town employees who helped save a life at the Recreation Department. Ms. Dudley, would you like to say a few words, please?
Mayor Barber and members of Town Council, thank you for the opportunity to appear before you this evening. Saving lives and alleviating the pain and suffering of patients is a fundamental value of those of us in healthcare. I'm Lauren Dudley, the CEO of Lewis Gill Hospital Montgomery. My colleagues and I are honored to be here tonight to recognize Joe, Ryan, Pete, Brandon, and Dr. Cox for their heroic and lifesaving efforts. We also want to thank you for highlighting their involvement in making lifesaving CPR and AED training available to your employees. During a cardiac event, every second counts. Without immediate treatment, a patient can face severe consequences, including death or permanent damage. These individuals were clearly in the right place at the right time, and they acted swiftly to save a life. Dr. Cox possesses the medical training necessary to respond to a sudden cardiac arrest, and as much as we would like to be, a healthcare worker cannot always be present or nearby when a cardiac event or other emergency happens. We need more employees and community members who are CPR and AED trained. Again, thank you and the town for providing this lifesaving training for your employees. Lewis Gill Hospital Montgomery and your Christiansburg freestanding emergency room is your neighbor and your healthcare partner. In closing, please let us know if there's anything we can do as a healthcare organization to support this training for more of your employees. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Lauren.
Do I need this?
Yes.
Yeah.
For everyone that we have mentioned in these resolutions, so as I call your name, if you would come up and receive your resolution, stay up here, and according to Christina, we're going to take a group photo with Town Council and the Lewis Gill staff at the conclusion. Very good, very good, very, very good. Joe Oly.
He's not here.
Okay, Brandon, if you'll take his to him. Ryan Hubbell. Thank you, Ryan, congratulations. Brandon Turner. This is ridiculous. Thank you, Brandon. Dr. Larry Cox. You can make it tonight, all right. Lauren, will you all, who's going to take it? I'm sorry, let me, I will present this to you all on behalf of Larry.
Thank you.
And if you all start filling in the gaps.
If we could have Town Council come up and take pictures.
I'm not done yet.
Oh, no.
Mayor, I think that's all of them that's here tonight.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Come on up. Counsel, if you'll come around, we're going to get.
Thank you.
So, let me view PR shots, and then we'll open up about 15 extra seats here for the people that are waiting in the other room.
All right, here we go, one, two, three, one more, one, two, three. Would you like to be in a picture with him?
Oh, well, I'm not great for that.
No, you won't. Yeah, we can put him in next to the mayor. How about that? All right, here we are. All right, one, two, three, one more, one, two, three. Thank you so much.
Step out of here.
I thought there were about 30 or 40 back in that room, but we got them all, huh?
It's full.
Okay, if it's being broadcast into there. Well, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearings. The first is a request by Harley Ash and Elizabeth Ash to vacate approximately 260 linear feet of a 7.5-foot-wide public utility easement in the north side of the property located at 95 Skyline Street Northeast, tax parcel 502-7-15A. Is there anyone here to address this? Did you come to the microphone and, or to the podium? Name and address, and do we have any slides up on that one, Christina? All righty.
Yes, what we were wanting to do, see how the utility easement is.
If you would get closer to the microphone.
I'm sorry.
It does a pretty good job, but it doesn't vary very far.
Okay. The easement runs basically up our driveway, and what we'd like to do is be able to put in a garage at some point later on. The utility easement is not really used where it's at. The phone, the only thing that runs up through there is the phone, and it's probably oh, three to five foot back over in the neighbors' yards. It don't even come over close to us.
Okay, so there's no underground, anything there?
No, sir.
Randy, have you researched all of this?
No, it's all clear down through there.
We don't have any issues. We don't have any utilities.
Okay, very good.
Can we get a name and address?
All right, thank you.
Please.
Can we please have your name and address? Sir?
It's the person who did the public comment.
Can we please have your name and address for this?
Yes, it's Harley Ash. Yeah, excuse me, I'm just getting pneumonia.
And then, and your address?
My address is 95 Skyline Street, Christiansburg.
Thank you. Next, is council's intention to adopt an ordinance in regard to a boundary adjustment agreement between the County of Montgomery and the town of Christiansburg, as requested by RWW4 LLC property owner, to incorporate property on the south side of Interstate I-81, approximately 1.084-acre tract, parcel 093-A-6. More particularly shown on this plan entitled Exhibit from Records Showing Boundary Line Adjustment of Tax Map Number 093-A6, to be relocated from Montgomery County, to be within the corporate limits of the town of Christiansburg, Reiner Magisterial District, Montgomery County, Virginia, surveyed January 17, 2025, within the town of Christiansburg. The property is designed as urban expansion on a future land use map of the 2025 Montgomery County Comprehensive Plan. Is there anyone here to address this, Ash?
Evening, Mayor, members of council, Steve Simonis of Balzer and Associates, 80 College Street. This is a little over one acre parcel adjacent to the property we're going to speak about over the next, the course of the next two public hearings. Owned by RWW, it's a little sliver, as I said, about an acre, triangle piece between the property that's currently in the town and the Four Square Life Bible College there to the west. As part of this project, what we are asking for is this to be boundary line adjustment from the county into the town, and as an update, the County Board of Supervisors took this up last night at their public hearing and voted to move forward with the boundary line adjustment. So I'm happy to answer any questions specifically about the boundary line adjustment, and as I said, I know we'll get into the rest of the project here in just a few minutes.
Straight sample, bringing it from the county to the, into the town?
Yes, sir.
Any comments or questions? Thank you. Council's intention to adopt an ordinance in regard to a zoning request by RWW4 property owner and applicant to rezone property located at the end of Summit Ridge Road Southwest and adjoining to the southern portion of Interstate I-81, 17.7-acre tax parcel number 557-A-22, from Town A Agriculture to Town R1, single-family residential, and within an unincorporated Montgomery County adjoining to the southern side of I-81, 1.084 of tax parcel 093-A-6, pending above boundary line agreement from Montgomery County A1 Agriculture to Town R1 Single Family. The property is designated as residential in the future land use map of the 2013 Christiansburg Comprehensive Plan, 17.7 acres, an urban expansion on the future land use policy map, Montgomery County, 2025 Montgomery County Comprehensive Plan. Now, before I ask if there's anyone here to address this, let me make certain that the members of the audience know, we will not make a decision on this property tonight. This is the reason we have the public hearing. We will wait to our next council meeting in two weeks, and at that point, it's when the decision will be made by council, and hopefully we'll have a recommendation in by the Planning Commission during that time. Now, is there anyone here to address this issue?
Sir, I also have to make a full statement.
David.
Sir, all right, council, thank you for the opportunity to be here. My name is David Bradshaw. I live at 475 Summit Ridge Road, and I'm glad you all got your seats.
Don't turn your head on me, David. If you'd like to hold the microphone in your hand and talk, that would be.
No, I'll try to, it doesn't go any taller, geez. How about that?
We have it at a 42 short for me, so I.
All right, is that better? If my mom is watching, I usually have better posture than this, or posture. David Bradshaw, 475 Summit Ridge Road, and I'm here to speak out against, and as I look over here and see all these seats that got filled, I'm, I want to say that I am a little nervous. I wish all the medical people were here, because my heart is above my lungs right now, because I don't normally like to get up and speak, but I'm happy to get up and speak, because I think we need to protect our neighborhood, and that's why I titled my slide here, Protecting Our Neighborhood's Future, and it's a room full of people here that probably feel a lot like I do, but that's what I'd like to address tonight, and I hope I can get my buttons right here. At first impression, as I mentioned, the Planning Commission, when we look at this thing, we see a very attractive, a nice layout, it's got rolling hills with curved roads, but with that also comes the excitement of new neighbors. We're excited about that, but with that excitement comes the thought of a lot of new neighbors, and one neighbor put it best when that person said, "It's still too much for us." This is a big development coming into an existing subdivision that's got some norms, some standards, some things that are treasured in an R1 zoning application. And so as we look at this, at first impression, it does look nice, but at second impression, that's when we start starting, we start seeing some of the details of what we're concerned about as citizens. When we first look at it, we see that on paper, it's well planned, but it's very jarring next to and flowing into the Town and Country Estates. Now, let me start off also here in these first few slides that says, "We're not against development." I think everybody there knows that that road ended on a beautiful piece of property. We all would have loved to have bought it and had that house probably at one point in our lives. We're not here to say no development here. We're saying, we're here to say we'd like for you to look at this in a different light. We know, and from hearing from the Planning Commission, that, that meaning that we've gotten to the Planning Commission point and now this point, because certain decisions have been made. This is not a question of staff and their ability to make decisions or advance things, but we're just here to look at things as concerned citizen, informed citizens, that want to address some of these items. And so as we look at this, right off the bat, as this traffic's flowing into Town and Country, because it's really, no matter what they say, it's only one exit point and entrance point for all this development. So we're going to be dealing with single access clogs on our streets, we're going to be dealing with smaller lots that shift the character of our neighborhood, and we're going to be dealing with high-density clashes with our comm that we have. And so we feel as a group that these need to be addressed and answered. We don't even know what kind of homes that are going to look, what they're going to look like when they go in there. We got some ideas, because we can look at some things, but we also got some good ideas. This is not a shot at the developer. I've looked at some of the work, and I'll mention later in one of my slides, they do great work. I have no doubt that they could do a great project, but we just feel, and we truly, truly believe, and if you asked for a show of hands, I think you'd find, that most people would raise their hands and say that this is too big. So when I say it's too big, let's look at some of the impacts here. I feel like I need to tilt my thing this way so I can stand and talk. Let's look at the density comparison. Town and Country Estates right now is 82 lots on 42 acres. That's a ratio of 1.9 lots per acre. That's a neat ratio, but there's some other factors that you have to look into before you actually get a good feel for that, and we'll talk about that. The proposed development that's going in there is 60 lots on 18 acres, which is a 3.1 lots per acre. It's twice as dense, 60 lots crammed into 30 doesn't fit the norm that's there. And then we can also get into the sewer maintenance, the impact there. There's going to be a strain on the sewer, higher density threatens sanitary sewer overflows, the SSOs. It could endanger homes along there with basements for backflow. The INI of new connections to old pipes, and we know that there are old pipes in there, the INI, the infill, inflow and infiltration, that's going to lead to higher costs at the treatment plant. These are all things that the tax burden is going to, these type things are going to be tax burdens that are going to fall on the taxpayers. And of course, we're going to talk about traffic concerns, and I'm not going to spend a lot of time on that tonight, because we've got some folks that want to talk about that. But Summit Ridge is a key pedestrian and biking route. At any time, you can see people walking. Heck, we saw a runner out there on our way here to the meeting tonight in the dark, and I thought, "That guy needs to be there at the council tonight." But he's not. But, so what this means, more homes mean more vehicles on a road that's not designed for high traffic, and that's what concerns us. Think of 124 rush hour trips choking our quiet route, and it's a dramatic density change. If you look here, oops, meant to hit the pointer. There it is. This is the outline of the proposed development. I took that from the record drawing or the master plan, and I, being a GIS guy, I do GIS, so I'm in high clover here dealing with that and numbers and plots and parcels and things like that. So I took the outline of theirs, I geo-referenced it in here, not to get into technical stuff, but what I was able to do is create the boundary so that it overlaid with existing town and county GIS data. I took this thing, and I made two copies of it, and I propped it upright going this way. Well, the pieces that went over the interstate are these pieces down here. And I did this slide so that you can see that in a silo, sure, this looks like a great project with rolling hills and nice lots and uniformality and a great tax boost for the town, but when you look at this, you can see that they're trying to shove two Summit Ridge subdivision developments into this one little area, and I think that's too much. So what does the comprehensive plan say about protecting older and existing neighborhoods? To paraphrase, the plan says, "Match our look, buffer us, keep our vibe, and ease our burdens." And all these little documents, oops, I got it, I'll get the pointer right, I promise. All these come from a paraphrase of Land Use Planning 2.2A. Buffer Us comes from Land Use Plan, I'm sorry, I said planning, plan. Land Use Plan 2.2A, and Keep Our Vibe comes from 1.6, and Ease Burdens comes from 2.8. These expand on it, I don't necessarily have to go into all this, but the development, if you read these articles, I mean, these documents, these approved documents, if you go back and you read these, you clearly see that it prioritizes compatibility and protection of surrounding properties during rezoning. Not later, not when it's under operation and maintenance, do we go back and look at things, it's when it's being planned, there's a process to do this. And so we want to make sure, in this light that we're trying to present tonight, that might work on another area, or might work in another area of the town, it doesn't work here. We need a development that fits the context of the existing uses and community character. That's what these documents, or these sections of the voted and approved document says. Using buffers, physical or spatial separations are mandated to shield adjacent properties. Now, we've seen an updated plot, and I didn't have that for this, where they add some trees in here, so we thank you for that. You're supposed to preserve the character. Rezoning should respect and enhance existing aesthetics and functional environment. That comes from 1.6 and the CED, I just drew a blank on that, Section 8. Commerce, I believe it is, but, and then mitigation of impacts. These plans call for strategies like traffic management, infrastructure considerations to prevent overburdening of the surrounding areas. That's what I want to point out. This is all about the surrounding areas. And I threw this in here, because I wanted to point out, it looked bigger when I did it for the Planning Commission, because I had less time and I wanted to show a big map, but this is their drawing, their master plan with their setbacks and all that, and so what I did is I took four random homes, mine being one of them, 475 right here, and I live right about there, I took existing floor footprints from the GIS, I copied them, and I placed them into this, and none of them fit in here at all. Even if you spun them around, which gets in the violation of another ordinance, we'll talk about that later, but even that, none of them fit in there. Now, I'm not here to say you got to build 1986-type ranch building or homes. It'd be nice, they're wonderful, but they don't fit. So right off the bat, you can look at this as the first test to say, "Hey, does this match?" And again, I'm not expecting 1986 style. It's got to be something bigger and better. And so last week at the Planning Commission, we got to see one of their footprints up here and one down here, just to give an idea of what it looks like, and one or two on a map kind of gives you an idea, gives you an impression of, okay, yeah, they fit, but then when you see all 60, or 59, or, yeah, I guess it's 59 or 60, whatever, when you see them all in here, and you start to back out the map, if we go to our next slide, this is what the town GIS is going to look like. Does this density look like anything over here or anything down here, or these residential neighborhoods that are in this treasured R1? I would say no, and so I don't think this matches it. So now if I go back and I say, "Well, what did the town ordinance say about protecting older and existing neighborhoods?", we can go back and look at R1, Residential 1, Section 42, I'm sorry, Chapter 42-92, Statement of Intent, and I promise you, I'm not reading long slides all night, this, we're getting over the bulk of it here, but what this says, if you go through here, it says that the district is intended for moderately low, it's an adverb, it's describing low density, it's important that we keep and maintain this, that's what this document's saying, and it's saying that the restrictions or the regulations that do this are designed to stabilize and protect the essential characteristic of the district, to promote stable or suitable environment for family life. Development shall be limited to relatively low concentrations. Now, I just ask anybody to look at that, and does that appear low? It may appear fine somewhere else, but compared to this, with all this traffic going out this way, I say no, it doesn't. And so the town has the authority to impose conditions, and these are things that happen at the rezoning. I learned a lot. I'm happy to be an engaged citizen, let me tell you. My civics teacher back in high school probably very proud, not sending me to the principal so many times, but the town authority has the authority to impose the conditions on the conditional use permit, and I think we need to refer to it as the conditional use permit, not a cup, because it describes it better. It's a conditional use, they are changing the use of this land. We're glad that it's going into residential, we're excited to know, and literally have a period at the end of the sentence or stre here, to know what's going to be built down there, so we're not wondering if townhomes go in there, which I don't think you could with some of the arguments we're making here, so I don't want to go down that path, but in here it says that you guys can add, you're empowered as a town council to add reasonable conditions to mitigate impacts like density, traffic, noise, aesthetics, in ensuring that planned housing development aligns with the ordinance of R1. And when we first look at this, at this very broad level, we would probably as a group, and hopefully as a board, say, "No, it doesn't." Last week at the Planning Commission, we threw up what we thought were some great hurdles. We've got fire code D1071, and we still think it's a very valid argument, but we were brushed aside to say that this was not enforceable, and I'm here to say, we think it's enforceable. If you go back and look at the town code, and again, I'm not going to read all this stuff, but the argument- stuff, but the argument was made that this is a statewide code, and it's listed in the appendices, and it's not offered as anything but guidance. In fact, if you read the note here, it says, "It's provided local resources, governments for consideration and adoption for the local stuff." Well, right above this, in our town code, it says statewide fire prevention code and its appendices in this article shall be enforced by the fire marshal or his duty representatives. And so, I think we've got plenty of information. We were told that this didn't matter, that it was not enforceable because it falls under something under maintenance and, or, shoot, I'm drawing a blank now. Whatever. But it falls under maintenance and operation. Oh, duh. I should look at my slide, right? Did we cut the duh out of the tape? It's not just maintenance and operation. How do you go through a process and say at the end, "Oh, you didn't meet the fire code"? That's what we heard as a group in that room back at the Planning Commission. So, I'm asking that you all consider this in the light that we're talking about today. And also, I brought up another point, and actually, I thought this was my golden nugget. I thought this was the one that was going to stop the whole thing. This is the riding your house. This is the front road serving it. This is the driveway they want to put in. This is the front of the house. It points that way. Section 4296 frontage, it says, "All structures in this district shall be located on a lot with the front of the structure facing the front of the lot line." We learned last week that this could be grandfathered in maybe, or it could be destroyed, which would have to be at the developer's expense. But who wants the reputation of destroying the beautiful riding your house? Not me. But we don't want four more lots there, but I'm arguing that you can't even put the 60 in here with what we're learning in the code. So, to me, that's not a valid argument. But in our world, when you, when we come to the town to say, "We want to do an improvement on our little piece of property if we want to do something," we've got to bring things up to what? Code, right? We've got to come up to code. And we were told that that could be grandfathered in, that it's not important. But right here, this says it's pretty important. And so, I think something like this needs to be addressed. And quite honestly, at the commission meeting, I was kind of hoping that this was going to be viewed to say, "Oh, you know what? We better redesign the road and make it a little more fitting to do this. This is a treasure." And so, if we're going to bring this old house into an old neighborhood with a new subdivision, I think we need to wrap it up and do it right and bring it up to code. So, that's kind of what I wanted to say on that one. So, and then, of course, our third, what we thought was our third strongest argument was the impact of traffic. Now, we're going to talk about traffic here in a little bit. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this slide. We did our own little local community survey of traffic. Since we couldn't get one out of the developer, and we couldn't get an adequate answer of adding new construction, 60 new homes on traffic that's already dealing, 100, or 100 and whatever it is, 163 dwellings when all said and done, or that are there now, it's going to be a problem with traffic. So, hopefully, you'll get a better understanding of what the traffic count really is and what we're concerned about. And then, I really wanted to park on this. I really thought that this was going to be my one slide tonight. Town and country estate residents oppose the subdivision because we have this treasured R1 zoning ordinance that protects us. The planning documents protect us. The comprehensive plan gives us some real legal muscle to demand a better fit. And I don't want to, I don't want to sit back and say, "Oh, I'm glad they're not going to tear down the house and put four more lots in there." I wish I'd thought of that at the Planning Commission, I would have said it. But we didn't have a chance to respond. But we don't think that that's the route, the documents that drive this town and control decisions say. So, we've got town ordinances, and this is here for you to read. I hope you will use these in your deliberation. But what I want to point out is that one of the main things that we've been focused on in the planning commissions that we've been here abouting is this 10,000 square foot minimum. Yeah, you can get to that minimum. I can get to that minimum by doing a lot that's 60 yards by, or 60 feet by, I think, 166 feet or whatever, and that gets you to the standard. And we've even heard that some of them are as much as 18,000. That's not the problem. It's not that minimum that we're worried about. We're worried about the frontage because they're suggesting that they want to go from 80 to 60 in a neighborhood where the smallest might be around 87 feet wide, but on average, they're probably all greater than 90-foot frontages. So, we do think that if you're going to honor the language up here in these documents, then they need to meet those standards. I think it's higher than what they're expecting, and it's a different argument. We're trying to watch what's going on over here when really the thing that we need to focus on is the width, because that's what's going to put the cramped homes next to each other. Somewhere in here, I'm in my notes. I told my wife to say notes a couple of times to where I could hear so I could keep up with myself. But, notes, thank you. So, down here, so that's the ordinances. In the comprehensive plan, I mentioned earlier, we've got land use planning 1.6 and 1.6A that demands stability and compatibility, blending new homes with our character without straining infrastructure. Loop, I'll just go with the word loop now, 2.2A, and said 8.5 requires buffers and designed fit. The denser lots defy this. These sections focus on maintaining and enhancing stability and integrity in Christiansburg's older neighborhoods. This isn't just for us. Every neighborhood that's got this coming down the road ought to be looking at this and coming back with it and looking at this in a new light. And then, the third circle here, in my wonderful little Venn diagram here, is the town and country estates R1 strength. That's our whole defense here, if you think about it, is we want to protect that. And section 42, or chapter 42, section 92 safeguards our wide lots, our peace, and it rejects this disruptive density that wants to come in here. And so, I think, and I'm hoping you all think, that when you look at these different circles in here where you see this laser focus, that's the projects that you need to decide on. That's what you have to look at this stuff. It's easy to say, "Yes, that's a permissible part, project to put in there with those lots. It's beautiful. It's got the rolling hills. It's got all that. I get that." But when you look at it in conjunction with other stuff, what works on the other side of town or up by the interstate, by Cracker Barrel and all that, hasn't happened in our neighborhood yet. If you zoom out the map and you look, you won't see developments like this on that side of 81 going down Franklin Street. And you're, by allowing this, you're starting to set up some trends or some precedents that's going to allow them to develop the lower lot even possibly worse. I don't know. Nobody knows what's going to happen with that. But that, those are the things that concern us, is that we want to guard what we've got going on there. So, now, let's walk down a little more here. It's a great street to walk on, but we'll walk down with some of the other things, say, if you want the actual language. But here's from your zoning map, or land use map. And when we look at the language in here, again, I've talked about loop 1.6A and, or 1.6 and 1.6A, but I wanted to make sure the text was in here so that you and the citizens here could see this. These are things that protect us. These are things that guard us. These aren't things that say, "Allow, allow, allow." These are things that say, "Protect, protect, protect." And that's what we're asking, that you protect our neighborhoods and don't allow this. 1.6 says, "Maintain and enhance the stability and integrity of Christiansburg older neighborhoods." 6A says, "Strive to ensure new housing developments and infills," which technically, the workaround the riding your house is an infill, I think. "Strive to ensure new housing developments and infill structures are designed in context with the existing built neighborhoods, complement the overall character and architecture of the neighborhood, and do not overtax existing public infrastructure." When rezoning, and again, this is verbatim, "When rezoning occurs in or near older neighborhoods, this strategy aims to protect surrounding properties by ensuring new development blends with the existing aesthetics and functional environment, avoiding disruption to neighborhood Well, going on, we've got some more things that I think are on our side. When I said that I thought we had some muscle behind the code, I think we do. If we look at the community and economic development protections, and that's what they are, they're protections. Eight, community character goals and strategies. Recreate and strengthen the community identity. Improve, again, it's mentioned here. I could read all these things if I want to, but you'll have them, and folks can see this. But basically, what I wanted to do, again, I took the project boundary that they're doing, and I picked it up and I put it over in what I think is the Kingston development to show that, you know what? Here's the structure. Here's Summit Ridge. It's not really, this is Kingston. But imagine Summit Ridge coming down here, turning this boundary a little bit. You can see a smaller area fitting in here with code enforced lots at 80 feet. We're suggesting that it's got to be more than 80 feet, but if you rotated this a little bit, I didn't, I just kept it the same angle. But if you rotate this, you can see that you probably get about 34 homes in here staying within the code. But they're going to have some problems back here along 81 because of the back and front setbacks. So, I'm just showing here that the proposed project boundary on another development in town works, and you can get other stuff in here. So, imagine Summit Ridge coming in here, this loops around, comes down to a little cul-de-sac down here, but of course, you've got to account for the riding your house now and how that's going to work. But that tells me that they can fit stuff in here if they want to. And so, what I did here, this is our subdivision here, and in this light, in this scale, you're not really seeing these blue numbers. But what these are, these are all the frontages of homes along Summit Ridge and this road here. 60 lots at 3.3 acres clash, 90-plus frontages nearby prove it's possible. This proves you can do a decent subdivision and still be somewhat in line with what we're suggesting and what we're saying that the code allows for. So, current subdivisions with similar conditional use permit variances. You're going to say, "Wait, these are R3 if you zoom in." Yeah, they are R3. All these have frontages of between 50 and 60 feet. This is what these developments look like. And if you zoom in, you're going to see a lot more fences along in here in these different subdivisions. We don't have a lot of fences in our neighborhood. It's a very open neighborhood, and we don't want neighbors to move in and feel like they have to build fences because they're so close to the next house over that they need some sort of privacy. We want folks to be able to move in here and have more space, not here, but into Summit Ridge Extension, whatever it's going to be called. We want to do that. We want people to have open lots. But these are examples. And so, to me, when I'm reading the ordinances and I'm reading the Planning Commission, I mean, the comprehensive plan, and I'm looking at what the master plan's calling for, I'm seeing, I guess, the modern parlance of today, I'm seeing a hack to get around the R3 zoning because they know that R3 won't fly over there next to Summit Ridge because it's too obvious if you read the code, because it does say moderate density and higher density. But what I'm suggesting is that we look at this and stop this because this workaround, this cup, is going to help the developer explore higher-density zoning options within our cherished R1 single-family district. And that will change our lower district, I mean, our lower density in our neighborhoods. So, I ask that you keep in mind the R1 text and code and the ordinances under the statement of intent. I love it that you have the word intent in the actual text because it's telling us what you guys were thinking when you voted on this, and it was probably done before some of you, but the word intent carries weight. The intent was to protect, 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 not give, 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 or allow, allow, allow. And it's important that it stops at the rezoning request and doesn't get beyond that because it's much more difficult to change things and stop things later. So, I've been critical. Let me be positive. I'm a positive guy. I'm a happy guy. My wife should say, "Be happy," but she doesn't have to because she knows I'm happy. I want to applaud the developer because I know that they can do great projects. I went out and I looked up the Robin Hood Estates. Rob, oops, got it. Don't lose it on the power. Here's Robin Hood Estates. It's built around Hans Meadow. It even has apartment compucks in it. They matched pretty much what went on at Hans Meadows. Beautiful. I know they can do it. They wrapped a new subdivision that's quite similar. In fact, it's 97 lots and 40 acres. Sounds a lot like Summit Ridge. It really does. So, we know we can do it, or they can do it. So, why not 30 lots on 18 acres over here? So, we know they can do it. We want to see it here. We're asking for nothing less. We're coming to you. We're asking, we're pleading, we're saying, "Don't change our neighborhood. We don't want that characteristic that's coming to town in the form of this higher-density So, what does this mean? We've heard lots of talk about affordable homes. That's great. It's not a charge of the town council to go out and build affordable homes. It's to provide a level playing field for people to find the home that they want to move to someday. If we go into our neighborhood and make all those tiny little lots, and the next one down, tiny little lots, we as a town are going to lose some valuable, attractive real estate that could be built for larger lots, a higher tax base perhaps, who knows? Who knows what could actually end up down there? The town has a right of way down at the end of that long field that comes out down to Kimball. Who knows what you could build there? You could have the next Smith Creek Road with some high-dollar homes, some middle-dollar homes, and some low-dollar homes, and maybe even some apartments, if you built that out as a multi-use district someday. But by starting to carve up some of this stuff in the quick interest of a developer, to have some small lots that can be built quickly to provide affordable housing, might be short sighted, this is all I'm saying. Now, we can't tell the developer what to do. We're not here to say, "You can't develop your land." In fact, we would like for you all to develop the land so that we know what's going to go in there, as I mentioned earlier. It puts the period at the end of the sentence, and we can all move on. But we want something that could be built quickly and nice and being attractive. We want the density to match ours. We want our neighborhood to attract people that live over in this neighborhood, for example, or other subdivisions that have the smaller homes. They don't have the yards to play in. Maybe their families are changing. This is why I'm saying here, "Growing together in Christiansburg, smart, sustainable homes for every family stage." We've got a great opportunity here to embrace a developer, to embrace a community, and announce to our community, "Hey, there's going to be some neat homes coming in here so that folks over here in the $225,000 home range can upgrade locally to maybe a bigger forever home in a new subdivision." Or maybe some of the ones that they build are going to be so nice that some of these folks might want to move to some of those homes. I wouldn't put it past us. They may be that nice, and it can be that nice. But by doing that, we have a natural ladder. We don't have a social engineering project going on here to say, "Hey, let's build this over here and try to fill it as fast as we can." Because if that's the argument, we can kind of nix that because there are other developments going on back there behind toward Cracker Barrel, all that developments that's going on. What is it?
By sheets.
By sheets, yeah. You've got that, all that's going in there, you've got townhomes, you've got apartments. There's going to be a lot of affordable housing, and they're a lot farther ahead in the process that we are here, or that we're trying to stop or slow up, that can move into those places quicker than what they're probably going to be able to do in this place. So, I'm suggesting that we get away from the discussion of having these lots. And by the way, just to confirm it, I went in here and I measured these lots in the GIS. Most of these are 57, 58, 64. And if you look, they're all zoned R3. The larger one, 75, happened to be residential 1, so there's obviously a conditional use permit there. But I'm asking you here, I think everybody here is saying, "Please don't compromise the unique appeal and charm of town and country estates for the developer's higher-density proposal." So, in conclusion, and they say that's often the most common words heard in these sermons, in conclusion, that's when everybody wakes up. We welcome growth. This is not a not-in-my-backyard argument. We support new development that maintains and enhances our neighborhood's character. It's not our individual character, it's not the people, it's the structures. They're our investments. They're the homes that we may sell someday so that we can afford to go into a nursing home if we have to do that. These are our assets. We want to protect those from that. And we think that we've got all that documentation that says the Council is going to do its best to protect that. The documents say protection, and we hope that you do that. So I hope you'll consider what I've said. I'm asking that you deny this rezoning and conditional use permit in its present form. You guys have an awesome, powerful tool, the conditional use permit, that can really protect the citizens, not just now, but future citizens. You can set a precedence that's very important. So I think that's something that you need to do. This is a project that's looking at profitability. We want to get as much as we can. We heard that at the Planning Commission. There's a reason they're doing it at this level, at this price point. We want to get as much as we can, and I'm here with a lot of people, I think, that are probably, thank you for having my back, probably here to say, yeah, we want to put the protection of our neighborhood above profit, and we want to build a neighborhood that people want to move to from neighborhoods. By the way, what I was, my point on the previous slide is, when these people move up to the higher homes, the $350,000 to $450,000, or whatever the price is going to be on these houses after you adjust for cost of construction materials going up, I would question to say, what's the quality of that if things have gone up in cost? What's the quality of that house? And what we don't want is another set of low-dollar homes. We want those homes to be, for these folks to move up, and they vacate those homes. And those people that are in apartments get their chance at the first home. It's a natural housing ladder. It works. And that's what I'm here to say I think you need to look at this as. So, I ask that you deny this rezoning and conditional use permit in its present form. And at that, I would like to say thank you for the time. We've got other folks that want to come up and speak to some specific things that I didn't address. And then I'm sure if you just asked for a show of hands on how many people are supporting against it, that could probably knock out some of the people that want to get up and talk, because they probably, like me, don't want to be up here. So thank you for your time. I hope I made sense. I hope you'll consider what I've talked about tonight, and thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Mark Vest. I live at 360 Summit Ridge Road, Christiansburg, with my wife and three children. My business associate's on my back, but I believe he, oh, and this is my daughter. I believe he had too much of the gravitas. My daughter would also like to speak. This is Finley.
I like to ride my bike and walk to the park, Finley.
I am not going to beat to death. Mr. Bradshaw did an excellent presentation, and there's no sense in me beating things to death. I'm speaking specifically from a public safety standpoint. Between EMS, military, and law enforcement, I have 25 years of experience more, and it's very important to me. They're adding, they're asking added 60 additional homes to a already fairly dense neighborhood on a single entry. We're just, we're simply not set up to handle that many, that many homes in that area. It's a disaster waiting to happen. We have brought up the Fire Code Section D 107.1 stating that subdivisions with more than 30 dwellings on a single fire access road must have a second access or sprinklers. We've brought that up in Planning Commission, and we brought it up with a developer. Developer hasn't addressed these concerns, at least, in my opinion, enough to assuage the community. Based on Christiansburg's Town Code Section 26-128, it clearly states, they, I'm sorry, when they pushed back, they stated that the, that fire code was an appendix, part of the appendix, and they don't have to follow that. But the Town Code Section 26-128 clearly states that the Fire Prevention Code and its appendices shall be adhered to. Additionally, the developer stated these codes only apply to existing buildings, not new developments. This doesn't pass common sense reasoning. Why would new construction not be required to adhere to safety standards that existing developments would have to adhere to? And I'm sure the developer's going to state that they are meeting their minimum standards. I'm simply speaking about common sense when planning communities of this scope. I can't say that poor planning will cause a disaster. It might. But I will say, based on my experience, that poor planning and not adhering to safety codes will always make a disaster worse if it occurs. And a single entry point on there is a disaster waiting to happen. There's so much traffic, and there's so many people at the end of that neighborhood. It is, it is a disaster waiting to happen. We had lines down just a couple weeks ago in an ice storm. We had lots of trees down, and it's just a disaster waiting to happen. I'm asking the Council to consider this for the safety of your community and our community. Meeting a nebulous minimum standard without considering the community as a whole and its associated challenges is just a bad idea. Please deny the proposed development as it is. Thank you.
What was that code that you gave?
Which, the fire code, sir?
Yes.
The fire code was Fire Code Section D 107.1. Yeah, I believe Mr. Bradshaw had it in his, and the Town Code that I cited was Section 26-128. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Barber and Town Council members. My name is Barbara Stepp, and I live at 765 Holly Drive in the Town and Country Development. And I'm here to kind of show why this proposal fails the Town's standards for responsible development, threatening the low-density R1 character. With two homes per acre and 10,000-square-foot lots, we value our suburban feel. This plan's four homes per acre on a dead-end road clashes with the Town of Christiansburg Comprehensive Plans land use plan and the compatibility mandate with all of that. And even with sidewalks, if those were to be added, it still risks traffic and alters our neighborhood. The plan requires open spaces under the Town of Christiansburg Comprehensive Plans, environmental 3.1 and 3.2. But this proposal offers none, ignoring the land use plan 2.7D's call for parks. Now, we have a neighborhood park at the corner of Summit Ridge and Briarwood, but there's only two to three parking spaces for it there. We need a park in this other area, if that's going to be, to buffer us. So please consider Chapter 40 Subdivision, Section 40 to 60D, which allows the Town Council to require land dedicated for parks. Let's enforce that now. Stormwater is critical. You know, the Town of Christiansburg Comprehensive Plan says rezoning's the time to prevent runoff. But past delays like the Cedar Hills development caused flooding. And on this topographical divide, we're on the continental divide, weak green infrastructure risks our water supply and the quality and the safety of it. The Town of Christiansburg Comprehensive Plans priority-based budget puts our health, safety, and welfare first in the land use plan number two. Cramming 75 homes here without buffers, stormwater fixes, or traffic plans undermines that and alters our R1 stability. We respectfully request denial. This proposal diminishes our quality of life. Please consider Article 4, Single Family Residential District R1, the Town of Christiansburg's Comprehensive Plan, and Chapter 40 subdivisions, and enforce those rules now. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Yeah. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council members. My name is Scott Friend. I live at 340 Summit Ridge Road with my wife and three kids. Again, thanks for your time to discuss this opportunity, you know, with the planned development. I'm going to elaborate a little bit on the VDOT secondary standard acceptance requirements and the impact that that's going to have on our community, kind of back to the traffic point. You know, per 24 VAC 30-92-60, the public benefit requirements, a street or network addition must provide sufficient public benefit. So what is public benefit is defined, you know, to be, you know, meet or exceed the public service, pedestrian accommodations, and connectivity requirements that are defined in the code. So, you know, we understand that the proposed solution, it meets those, it meets the public service. There are three, more than three dwellings back there, of course, and pedestrian, it meets those, has sidewalks, and the connectivity requirements, it has, you know, two stubouts. But those requirements are pretty low. I think we can all agree that's a pretty low bar to trip over. And it really does also ignore the impact to the existing roadway and the existing community. So, you know, the planned stub connections do nothing to accommodate the added traffic of 60 additional homes. There's still a single ingress and egress like we've talked about. You know, while the new development will have sidewalks for pedestrian safety, that doesn't do anything for our street and our current residents, right? You know, the children and adults that live there, and myself included, you know, many of, the rest of the community will still be less safe based on this current proposal with the added traffic. You know, I think it's probably a safe assumption to assume that members of the new community will also be using Al Rosen out there, just going to stick back in their little corner, right? So they'll be left safe as well. So, you know, I think, I think we should really figure out a way to address that so, you know, both their safety and our safety can be, you know, maintained. So I would request that the development, you know, addresses this common sense traffic safety and pedestrian needs, you know, beyond those SSAR minimum requirements, and ensures that the plan serves the existing and new community effectively. And I think that it's been suggested that one of those stub connections, the stub connection out of the west could be connected back over to Route 8. That would be significantly worse because it would just create a cut through. So residents and non-residents wouldn't be going. So instead of, you know, 60 homes' worth of traffic, it'd be probably thousands, because everybody that lives back, you know, past Summit Ridge, down that direction would also be using that as a cut through. So, you know, connecting the sub on the south side of the development through the property owned by the developer's son, which is almost certainly going to be developed based on the future land use plan, would certainly be a pervert solution to allow for another egress from the property while not, you know, creating another cut through. So, you know, if we can't address these concerns, again, as everybody else's request, then I would request that this proposal be denied. Thank you again for your time and the opportunity to address my concerns.
Hello, Mayor and Council. I appreciate you guys having us up here. My name is Grant Foster. I live at 195 Briarwood Drive, which is the lower part to Summit Ridge. You know, I hate to beat a dead horse, but I think that's what we're doing up here. You know, there's a few things, you know, what Mr. Friend just said. I'm not opposed to town growth. I'm not opposed to the growth, as long as it's in a responsible and respectful way to the residents here. You know, I love Christiansburg for the vibe that it's got. I grew up in Blacksburg. I don't want to live in Blacksburg. Blacksburg couldn't pay me to live there. I'd hate to see this town turn into what I see Blacksburg as now. There is a way to do this, and like Mr. Bradshaw said, it's, they've got it set up beautifully. It's just, you can do it a different way. And I'm a construction background. You know, it is on a topographical divide. I don't have the slides up anymore, but we are on a topographical divide. And those lower people on the Briarwood Drive where the cul-de-sac is, you know, once they get done with grading and all that stuff, your topographical map that you have right now currently is kaput. You know, that water runoff, you know, if we have a storm like we had last week, it's going to overflow that, water overflow that they've got down there, and it's going to backtrack into the Summit Ridge neighborhood, something that we don't need, we don't want. You know, as far as traffic is concerned, you know, I have two boys under 10, a nine and a five-year-old. Today, I went and picked them up, came home, I mean, before we could even get out of the car, they were running down to their friend's house. There's a lot of kids in the community, and I had to get onto one of them because the sun sets down towards where the cul-de-sac is, and when you're driving in, the sun's in your eyes, and he ran across in front of a car, you know, already coming. I had to get on to him a little bit. So that's just something that we do every day. You add 16 more houses, 120 more cars, which is a low-ball number for it. You know, it's, it's too much for our community or our neighborhood to handle. Then you add in the traffic four months out of the year for the Ridgewood Pool, which, you know, bumps those, you know, those hours for, you know, operation, you know, wildly. You know, we had a few people, volunteers in our community, sit down at the end of the road and with a clicker, you know, getting people to come in. The numbers that you saw, and I don't know where the numbers came from, but you'll see from somebody that did it here, that's got it, you know, those are way, way low for what we even got now, and the pool's not even open. Also, the first part of Summit Ridge is a glorified one-lane road. I think 24 feet is the average for newer, per VDOT, for newer roadways. At the entrance, it is 28 feet. At 135 Summit Ridge, you're at 21.1 feet. At 170, you're at 20 feet. At 22 or 225, you're at 19.6 feet across in width. We have had a lot of cars down there picking up, you know, from the ice storm. I pulled into the neighborhood a few days ago, and it was, you know, four backed up to try to get out, and three backed up trying to get around because there was, you know, a cleanup truck on the left-hand side. I took a few pictures of it. If you want me to send those to you, I can, but it's, until you get to that Y and it opens up a little bit, it's, it's already, you know, overgrown with our, with our neighborhood. And then if this goes in, and you get the 60 homes in there, and you get all the people in there, you might as well put a house at where we have our park at right now, because I guarantee you, I'm not letting my kids go up there. You know, with the amount of traffic there is at the Y, they're not going to go up there. You know, that's going to, you're going to null and void the green space that we need for our community putting all those down there. And I want to say this, too. If Christiansburg doesn't need these homes, you know, built the way that they've got it proposed, you know, broker the deal, whoever needs to do that with the Life Bible College, split a Y out of that road, come down and come in, and let it be its own neighborhood, you know, and they can do whatever, what they want to with it. But as it's proposed now, where it's coming in through our neighborhood, it just adds too much stress on our already, you know, awesome neighborhood. And I really do enjoy it the way that it is. While I would, I wouldn't mind having a few extra people down at the end of the road. We can't deal with 60 houses and 120 cars, so. I really do appreciate y'all's time, and I hope you guys come to a good, happy medium for what we need in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Grant.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Town Council. My name is Jackson Friend, and I live at 340 Summit Ridge Road. I've lived in Christiansburg all my life, and also I'm a runner for the CHS High School. I run for cross-country indoor and outdoor track, and we're not in season all year. Probably six to eight months of the year is while we're in season, and I have to get my runs in to stay in shape in the off-season. And our road right now is a safe place for me to run, but outside of our road, there's not any safe places for me to get to to run. And if we add 60 more houses to the end of the street, the traffic could be bad and make it hard and unsafe for me to get runs in. And also, I have friends and my brother, who is starting track this season, and getting their runs in could be hard, just with the added traffic. And our street, there's a lot of people that walk and run on it, and the safety problem could not be good for the health of the street and people getting out and being outside. It's good for your mental health, and it could help with just things that people like to do outside. And I hope that we can get maybe another street or something to help with the traffic. And, crap. Also, with the sewage that could be added to the thing, in my house, we have a basement, and we're actually remodeling it right now. It's really nice, and I'm really excited for it. But if we have 60 more houses and we do get another ice storm or something that did like what happened a few weeks ago, the added sewage and the water, it could overflow the basement and ruin maybe in a year or two what we have finished in my basement, and I wouldn't really want that. It's, I'm really looking forward to it. It'll be a place to hang out with my friends.
Thank you.
So I'm just hoping that we can find a way to maybe get less houses, and that's, I'm not opposed to having more houses either. I would be open to meeting more friends and having more people that I can talk to on the street, but, you know, it'll be hard, even if I want to walk down to the end of the street to go meet a friend or something, getting down the street without getting hit. And the other thing is, since the street's not very wide, it could be hard for, if there's cars going both ways, for someone to get on the edge of the street. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'm Anna Bryan from 225 Summit Ridge Road.
Ms. Bryan, you may want to speak up just a little bit. I'm having trouble hearing you. And I have hearing aids, so.
My name is Anna Bryan. I'm from 225 Summit Ridge Road. Thank you for hearing me tonight. I would like to share some data from our own citizen traffic study that we did. On Friday, February 20th, we matched the ITE peak hour timeframe. From 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM, Franklin had 760 cars. Summit Ridge, 89 cars. From 4:00 to 6:00 PM, Franklin had 1,037 cars. Summit Ridge had 138 cars. On Monday, February 24th, from 7:00 to 9:00 AM, Franklin had 812 cars. Summit Ridge had 103 cars. From 4:00 to 6:00 PM, Franklin had 1,132 cars, and Summit Ridge had 145. What this shows is that the traffic already triggers the need for a formal traffic study at the developer's expense. According to a 2022 speed summary performed by our Public Safety Department, there was an average of 381.6 vehicles with speeds ranging from 11 to 48 miles per hour on Summit Ridge Road per day. With an already aged roadway that currently needs updating, traffic from the construction equipment making multiple trips per day would degrade our roads rapidly and would further increase the danger to pedestrians, especially our children. This will affect the town and county residents who have no other option but to use North Franklin Street passing Summit Ridge. This data shows that this project is not suited for our neighborhood. This data shows that this project is not suited for our neighborhood. The impacts on traffic and public safety are too great. There was a picture that David had put up of our, at the end of the street, and it's one of my favorites. It's a gorgeous view of what we see now, which is a beautiful wood fence and the rolling hills, and you can see the trees of the farmhouse in the distance. And whenever we go there, I have the boys look out at it. We look for birds, they love animals, we look for deer and squirrels. And I was wondering if this project is put through, if we could, if you would consider less houses, and possibly like a greenway area there with trees, and maybe one of those ash, cedar ash, walkways, maybe, something pretty to look at. I'm opposed to the project as is, and I really thank you for your time. Thank you so much. Please help us.
You did, you did good, you did good.
I'm Don Peters, 455 Summit Ridge Road. Thank you for the opportunity of letting us speak tonight. My concern is a safety one, has to do with lighting on Summit Ridge Road. Summit Ridge Road is six-tenths of a mile, 55 houses, and has eight streetlights. One of those lights came down in the ice storm along with the pole. I noticed the pole has been replaced. I'm hoping that the light will be put back up before too much time goes on. Of the eight lights that we typically have, two lights are very dim. If you're walking at nighttime and you look down the road, you can see where the normal lighting lights up swaths of light on the road, but where these two lights are, there's no light at all, seen from a distance. It just looks like it's completely in the shadows there. Even with our good lights, which are six of them, they are so far apart, there are still dark patches between them that you can see. So there's real discrepancy between light and dark on Summit Ridge. I didn't find any codes for Christiansburg in terms of distance of streetlights. I don't know whether there are any. I did find a couple of other sites, some of them from other states, and several of these sites mentioned a rule of thumb. Streetlights should be two and a half to three poles length between each streetlight. Two and a half to three poles length between each streetlight. So using that as a rule, I walked up and down the street and tried to figure that, imagining three poles between streetlights, and I concluded that the, going by that rule, Summit Ridge could use nine more lights, and possibly three new poles. As David mentioned earlier, we do have walkers and joggers early in the morning and in the evening when things are dark. They're running and walking through dark patches right now. 60 new houses is going to increase the traffic, and with lighting like that, it's going to make things a lot more dangerous. 30 houses will, too. I know most of us are, or I guess all of us are in favor of 30 houses rather than 60. If the project goes through, whether it's 30 or 60 or some other number, we really need better lights for safety reasons on that road, so I would ask the town to seriously consider that if this project goes through. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Barbara, council members, for hearing our collective concerns here. I'm going to try to keep this as short as possible. You've heard everything, I don't want to be sounding repetitive. But my name is Bruce Jennings, I live at 365 Summit Ridge Road. In my 47 years here in Christiansburg, I've seen Christiansburg grow quite a bit, quite rapidly, and so did the town council at that time. And at that time, the town decided to strengthen the town codes. They established in November 19th, 2013, the town's comprehensive plan, and this was to protect, as was mentioned, to protect the families in Christiansburg from uncontrolled growth. Now with this in mind, I believe that the Summit Ridge rezoning and cup are currently, as currently proposed, should be denied. However, we also believe that there is a path forward that aligns with the comprehensive plan and protects the community's safety, their interests, and the quality of life. And now here are just a few steps that will bring the project in line with the town code and the town's comprehensive plan. There's only four that I will be mentioning. One is the fire code, again, D107.1 compliance. The need for a legitimate second exit has already been mentioned, and I want to emphasize how important that this, that the safety of those new families that will be moving in there and don't have a voice to speak right here. So it's up to you and it's up to us to show and express our concerns of their health and safety in our community. Number two, it's reasonable density. That has been mentioned, but to limit the density to 30 houses reduces risks of runoff, of overcrowding, of life safety concerns while maintaining the suburban character of our neighborhood. This, too, has been ignored by the developer. It violates the town zoning code 4292 that addresses a 30-foot setback. The developer proposes 20. The code provides for a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet. They're proposing as small as 7,000 square feet. This does not maintain the suburban character as our, in our neighborhood. CED 8, CED 8.3, CED 8.6, all emphasize the importance of maintaining the existing community's character. This proposal fails to recognize that. Third point, real onsite stormwater measures. Incorporate green infrastructure per ENV 2.2, such as rain gardens, permeable pavement, bio swells, and infiltration basins. Ensure that the final designs align with ENV 2.13, calling for reduced runoff at the rezoning end, preventing additional burdens on the existing gardens. Now, for example, the developer could integrate a series of rain gardens along the property line to maintain the stormwater locally and enhance the community's aesthetics. The last point is the sustainability and quality of life. Preserve open space, buffer zones, and wooded areas to protect the water quality and retain the local character. Now, it was written in ENV 2.1, which addresses the tree canopy, and the ENV 3.1, which is addressing the dedicated open spaces. Now, recognize the comprehensive plan's directives for open spaces in new subdivisions, ensuring that the future residents can enjoy the community's friendly spaces. As proposed, there is no allowance for any of these open space. Specifically, the developer should include the town as, with a town park as part of the open or green space requirements. Now, by adopting these measurements, at this stage, the project can create a safer, more sustainable neighborhood while truly upholding the town's comprehensive plan. This is not just about solving problems, it's about creating a development that enhances our community and sets a standard for reasonable growth. Otherwise, we maintain that the council should deny the rezoning and cup request. The health, safety, and welfare of our community must come first. We trust that you will prioritize these values and uphold the standards of the comprehensive plan. Thank you for your commitment in the future of this town, especially in enforcing the goals of the comprehensive plan before the site plan stage. Together, we can assure that growth benefits everyone, not just a few. Thank you.
So, we have, we've had a lot of people speak, and we certainly welcome the aisle over to speak. What I would like to ask is if your point of interest has already been covered, if you'd let us move on to the next one, but come on up, you beat me to the punch.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilman. My name is Roger Dominguez. I live at 245 Briarwood Drive. Most of these concerns have, like you mentioned, have been raised. I work for Public Works of Christiansburg, and the 60 homes that are getting ready to be put in, which I would call cookie cutter homes, in my opinion, are going to create a nightmare going through that road. Depending on what houses are being built and how they're being built and where they're being built, it's going to create off-street parking, you know? They're not going to have enough room where they can have off-road parking like the current homes that are in there now. I plow for a living, and having cars stacked into already a narrow road, driving a 10-foot plow through them roads are going to create big issues. So I do ask the town to reject this 60-home. I'm not opposed to a 30-home, but 60 homes is quite, quite a lot. It's going to create problems for commercial vehicles going through there. The trash truck now barely gets through there and has to back out all the way. The mail person, I don't know how they're going to weave in and out of cars when parked on the road. So those are concerns that I see that will, that I can see and have witnessed, you know, while working for the town, so. Thank you again, and just, final opinion is reject the current proposal.
Thank you.
I'm Suella Wolf. I live at 175 Kimball Lane, and thank you, Mayor Barbara and Council, for the opportunity to address another situation. I live on, in a subdivision called Kingston Court, and we're just two streets, and we do a butt up to Summit Ridge. And the way we see it, this development is just simply too large, and it will just have such a detrimental effect on our neighborhood. And because with all the, if you allow 60 new homes, 60 people probably have, 60 homes probably have at least two vehicles, and you're talking about all these vehicles, many of them will be going out to work in the morning. The, it's already been addressed, the amount of traffic that is on South Franklin on a day-to-day basis. And I did give you a, since you emailed you a map, I don't have the fancy PowerPoint presentation, but just a rough map of what we have to contend with now. We have a very narrow street, we have no sidewalks, we have, the developer's son has established his business at, own property that he bought at the end of Summit Ridge, that's, I mean, I'm sorry, at the end of Kimball, the absolute construction business, which now is on land that's still zoned agriculture, the best I can tell. And when you talk about all those extra vehicles coming in or going out onto Summit Ridge, onto our street off of South Franklin, in an attempt to get up to Summit Ridge, go to the park, people walking to the park in the summer, the pool, Ridgewood is very busy in the summer. The park is not fenced, and talk about morning traffic, all those cars heading out in the morning, trying to get on to South Franklin, many will just, might choose, the potential is there for them to decide to just detour, take a detour slightly off, go down Kimball Lane, in an effort to get to South Franklin first, ahead of the group that's already deadlocked on Summit Ridge. That's just going to tie it up even worse because they can, the Kimball Lane traffic could get out first. And you've got school buses, that's the proposed development likely would mean more bus stops. We have a bus stop on our street, we have a bus driver on the street behind us, and we're also, because of the construction site down there, at the end of our street, we have been, I'm sorry, not construction site, construction business, then we're already inundated, inundated morning particularly, afternoon particularly, and throughout the day, with those wide, huge construction vehicles, the trucks, and you add that to the traffic mess that's going to be there from, would be there from the 60 extra homes. You can see where we have, we have a legitimate concern. We're used to having, we have walkers, families pushing, parents pushing baby strollers, and runners, bikers. We've always enjoyed a sense of safety, and that will be just totally gone out the window if this development was allowed to proceed as it is proposed. And we have a sense of safety, and I think, I think we deserve to be able to keep that sense of safety that we have. And I did mention the absolute construction business before, and I'm sorry I was told it didn't really concern us, but it does, because there's, you know, essentially saying I didn't know what I was talking about, but it does concern us. We're already having to deal with it, and there's always the potential that that business could be involved in the construction of homes, and also possibility of a road out, which would go through that land onto Kimball. And also want to address some of the suggestions that were made at the Planning Commission meeting last week. One was to inhibit the speeding some with installing speed bumps, and those are pretty useless, but they do slow traffic down just a little bit, but we all know that people just usually swerve around them. And also, the snowplows that our friend drives, you know, they're pretty, they destroy those things. And it's also suggested that the developer seek a right-of-way through the Life Bible College land, because apparently they do not own that land, they would have to get a right-of-way for emergency vehicles. That does not address the overall problem that we have, and potentially will have, from a 60-home development. And it was mentioned, making a right turn at the end of Summit Ridge onto South Franklin Street to make a right-turn lane. The developer really doesn't have the authority to do that anyway, but there's not room, it would take, it would even mean having to widen the street, but it would do anything to help the traffic in the mornings anyway. I mean, nobody's going to pilot to work, everybody's heading out toward town to work. And so, I just, I just want to mention that was not really a viable solution. And I appreciate, Mayor and Council members, I appreciate the opportunity to state my opposition to the development as it's proposed. Thank you.
Thank you. I will point out that Suella did present, send us a photograph, sketch of it, I don't know that we have it on the thing or not, I don't know that it was requested to be shown. I think it was just so council would know what you were talking about, is that pretty much correct? Okay, so we don't need to bring it up. Anyone else? Was anything any different?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Joshua Bryan, 225 Summit Ridge Road. I had a, I had a big speech wrote up, but I think my neighbors echoed my concerns better than I probably could. As a father of two small children, I just want to ask that the council members can As a father of two small children, I just want to ask that the Council members consider the safety of our children and pedestrians, elders that use the road. Yeah, and thank you.
Mr. Simonis. Have you had your time, David?
I've got it. There's something different.
This is our petition.
This is a petition.
Hey, Steve.
Steve Simonis, Ballser and Associates, AD College Street. Usually I'm going first, but I think this is good to hear a few more things tonight that I hope I can address. I'm going to go through, and I know we've had a long night already, Mayor, but I'm going to try to go through some of this. I think it's important to understand some of the nuances about the codes that have been talked about, about our connectivity, and then about the project itself. So I'm going to go through just some of our slides here. Again, we all know what we're talking about, so I won't go into, into that. But we are talking a lot about just off the page here, you know, the, the access into the, into the property off of Franklin onto Summit Ridge Road. So we'll, we'll get back into that. As talked about, you know, we, we do have 60 lots. I think it's important for Council to understand that in the R1 zoning district, we have a 10,000-square-foot by-right minimum that we work towards. If we want to do anything other than that, we've got two options. One, we could do the cluster compact development, which allows you to lower lot sizes down within that R1, basically average the lot sizes down to, I believe, 8,500 square feet, or you can go the route that we've got, which is ask for a planned, planned development. And we're drop, we're asking to drop down to 7,500 square feet, as, as mentioned a couple times tonight. One thing I did want to just note, I'm sorry, I can't remember the gentleman that mentioned it, and it may have been Mr. Bradshaw, about R3-type developments. So the older subdivisions in town, New River Village and some of those other planned developments, it used to be, and Mr. Wingfield could speak to this too, it used to be, we could only do a planned housing development if we rezoned to R3. What that did is over the years, we would come to a public hearing like this and people would hear R3 and think you're putting in townhomes or apartments. So what the town did a few years ago, ran in, I can't remember how long ago it was, but allowed us to use the, the planned housing development in an R1 zoning district. So if we wanted to adjust the development standards, we could do that under an R1 zoning as opposed to an R3. So it's nothing that we're trying to sneak through. It's something the town actually addressed in their code to help make, you know, rezoning processes like this a little bit more clear to neighbors, so it didn't look like we were asking for multifamily to then switch down to a single family. So I did want to address that. I had a note here. So we do have 7,500-square-foot lot minimums. If you look on here, the 7,500-square-foot lots are some of these down here, you know, seven through 11, and then a few up here, 20, 21, 22, you know, these, these right here. Most of the lots, they were over that square footage, and they get up to about 18,000 square feet at the largest, some of your larger ones here at the end of the cul-de-sac. We've talked a lot about the one-way in and out. Do want to bring everybody's attention to Council's attention. When this subdivision was developed originally, a right-of-way was not stubbed off of Briarwood. You know, normally we would make a connection to any street that's stubbed out, and I'll talk about that a little bit too, but that, that right-of-way stops right there at Briarwood. There isn't anything that punches through, so we, we couldn't make that connection to kind of loop all the way through the development. These would be homes for sale. So that's the idea, you know, we've, we've talked a lot about tonight, or heard a lot tonight, of taking from 60 lots down to 30 lots. Want everybody to understand going into it, if we do 60 lots as we're showing, you know, anything in that range, you're looking at, at house prices in the 300 to 400 range. We drop that to 30 lots, you're looking at house prices over half a million dollars. That's not what the town of Christiansburg and the New River Valley right now really needs. We've got areas in town where we have larger lots, we have standard R1 lots, and those are the houses that are going for 460, 480, $500,000-plus. So every, every meeting we sit in, and Council, you sit in these as well, economic development meetings, we sat in one yesterday at the county, and everything we hear is housing, housing, housing. Everything we talk about, whether it's economic development, it's employers coming in, looking for housing for their staff, major industries coming in, we need housing in the New River Valley. This area shows as residential in a comprehensive plan. That's what we're proposing. When we looked at this, we said, this isn't, this isn't an appropriate area for townhomes. It's not an appropriate area for duplexes or apartments. It's appropriate for single-family. So we looked at it, the days of, you know, and I believe it was Mr. Bradshaw again, that brought up, you know, the, the ranch-style, the 70s, 80s ranch-style homes. I grew up in one, most of us grew up in one, you know, if we grew up in these type of neighborhoods. But those days of that half-acre lot with a ranch house are gone. You know, we, we don't do those anymore. That's not what people in, in the market are, are looking for. And again, I'll get that, get to that in a minute. So from a, from a standard standpoint, we've got a, a public roads here built to town standards. We've got sidewalks on both sides of the road. To our Public Works employee that spoke just, just a minute ago, you know, these would be fully designed to town-standard roads. So these are 30-foot-wide roads that are built with a width enough to allow and to encourage on-street parking if necessary, but this was something that was brought up at Planning Commission, wanting to know what our standard. We've got a note here, kind of what a typical house size would be if you did a one-level home that had, you know, basically master bedroom on the main, one-level living. So that's what our typical footprint is down here at the bottom. These couple purple houses here, a couple examples of what those would look like, and I wanted to show two on some of our smaller lots to show, you know, 33 feet, you know, in backyard area here. This one's a little bit tighter at 28 feet, but I think the town code, the R1 standards, I believe 35 feet. So we're not talking about going from 35 feet to 5 feet. We're saying 35 feet, in this case, to 28 feet. So while we have smaller setbacks, the houses that are planned to go on here, and these are just one example of the, the house types, but you see here in the middle, these are, these are generous backyards. These are, these are very similar to some of the other homes that you see in the neighboring community. The setback in the front is enough for two cars to park in the driveway as well as a garage that they would have. So we would be able to have cars off the street for people parking in these, you know, living in these homes. Connectivity is something that we've, we talked a lot about in Planning Commission. We didn't hear a whole lot about it tonight, but I do want to address it. I passed out some paperwork tonight. Everybody should have. The front sheet is, is this page right here. I wanted everybody to have it, so you can read it later, because it is hard to see on the screen. When we're designing a subdivision that's going to be accepted, that's going to have a road that's accepted into the state or the town system, the town has to, the town has certain road standards, and in order to get VDOT maintenance funding, they have to meet certain standards that are set by VDOT as well. One of those is connectivity. So in 2011, VDOT changed their connectivity index requirements to what we call the, the secondary street acceptance regulations, SSAR guidelines. And this is what's important to note with this project. So I want to say, I, I sit at Planning Commission, I have a lot of, I, I have several friends that live in the subdivision. I don't know if I do anymore after tonight, but I understand what they're saying. I understand the concern of traffic coming through the neighborhoods. I under, I understand the concerns on change, but what needs to be clear is from a regulatory standpoint, a regulation standpoint, we're meeting the, the VDOT requirements, and we're meeting some of the other requirements that have been, that have been discussed tonight. I do want to just touch on these. So the connectivity is, is one piece of it. So VDOT connectivity says if you have between 100 and 200 lots, you need to provide two points of connectivity. And in this, in this note here on this sheet, you'll see the physical connection is, gives you three options: a physical length with a, with an existing street and the network, construction of a stubout for a current or future connection, or construction of a stubout to a future network addition within the same development. So that would be like if you're building phase one and you're going to stub a street to phase two. So these are examples from that VDOT guideline. So here's 120 lots that's shown here in this example. So there's one connection to the main road and a future stub road right there. This is the same example, but doesn't meet that connectivity index. It only has the one connection here. These examples down here show a phased development. So think about Summit Ridge in a phase. So the first section, that's the smaller section with, where you've got a few duplexes, I believe, down there, maybe a triplex and some smaller homes, that very first stretch of Summit Ridge, when you turn off of Franklin, you know, could be a phase one. The piece that most of our neighbors here live in is the, is the Summit Ridge proper in Briarwood, and then we've got an extension beyond that. So if you look at that, this connectivity adds on as you go. So there are certain requirements, the, the more lots you get, the more connections you need to have. So and you can see here, 2,500 vehicles per day, that's another way to look at it, or dwelling units, and it tells you how many connections are required. Again, this is from VDOT. So with our development, including what's, what's in this section of Summit Ridge and the rest of Summit Ridge, and I believe somebody said it earlier, I think we're 162 or 163 total units. So that's still under that 200. So by the VDOT code that the town goes by, we only need two points of connectivity. So we've got, you know, Summit Ridge currently has three. One, two that goes over to Kimball, and three that stubs into the property we're looking at. When we do ours, we would need to have, you know, some additional, but we're still under 200 for a total of that entire subdivision, the existing plus ours. So we would only need two, but we've got five. So we've got one, two, three, and then two road stubouts here that meet the connectivity requirements for VDOT. That's just, that's just the facts. It meets the connectivity requirements for VDOT. So those, these are the two we're connecting to.
Let's hold our side conversations, unless you want to go out in the hallway and do it. Steve, go ahead.
The other piece of it that I think is important is this last little bit right, right down here. If a new development is built, which abuts a VDOT maintained stubout, the street network of the new development must, in big bold letters, must connect to the stubout. So again, we, we're required to connect to these stubouts. That's the point while we're, while they're designed. All of our new subdivisions, we've had situations in the past in Christiansburg when, when subdivisions have been built out with just a cul-de-sac and not built all the way to the property line, that's caused problems for neighbors. New River Village was an example of that. The town has changed its code and requires us, and VDOT does now as well, to actually build these streets to the property line, so there's no confusion later. Well, I've been living on a cul-de-sac for 10 years, why is there a street going through now? So we must connect to that based on those standards. The other one, and, and I said this to Planning Commission last week, this is a little, it, it may not make sense, but again, it's the law. So the statewide fire prevention code, this is directly off of Department of Housing and Community Development's website, and this is in your packet as well. The statewide fire prevention code is a maintenance code which is enforced once a structure receives a certificate of occupancy and contains the regulations which must be complied with for the protection of life property from the hazards of fire and explosion. The fire safety code, the fire prevention safety code is a maintenance and operations requirement. So it is built in to the state system, but new construction is handled through the building code. So I've got the, the whole book right here. So if you read in the very first page of the book, so it, it states right here, establishing standards to safeguard life and property from hazards of fire or explosion arising from the improper maintenance and improper maintenance of life safety and fire prevention and protective materials. So the fire prevention code is, is basically what our, our local fire officials do when they come into your building. They, they do it in my office building, they come, they check the exhaust, they check your fire extinguishers. If you've got an existing building that's doing renovation, it has to meet those codes. And to, to, to the point that in the, in the town's public safety section, it does say, and Mr. Bradshaw had this pulled up, it does say that the town follows that, and, and I'm in 100% agreement, the town does follow the fire safety code and its appendices in relation to maintenance and operation. It is not a code that's followed for new construction. That's just, that's just the facts. So whether it should be or not, that's not for me to decide. It's, that's set at the Board of Housing and Community Development, which is a governor-appointed board that reviews building codes, fire codes, all the subcodes, electrical, plumbing, all those codes are run through this section. This has just been recently updated, just went into effect January 18th, I think, the new code revision. So again, while we've, we've heard from some of the neighbors that this is something that should be done, this 30 lots, that appendix is not part of the new construction building code as stated by the state of Virginia. And I've got several, several items in, in your packet that, that talk to this. This is a couple more, these are a couple more examples from that fire code that, again, that states specifically, update cycle removed construction requirements from the model code. And the appendix that was noted, and I believe one of our previous speakers noted this, you know, this appendix is not part of the code, and it's there for reference only. So again, we have to, we have to, from an engineering standpoint, from a developer standpoint, we have to design and, and propose things by the codes that are in place. We, we can't propose about what feels good. If, if we're meeting a code, we're meeting a code. Do want to go back, a couple, touch on just a couple other points, Mayor. We've talked about, there were stormwater management, there was, there were a couple comments brought up at Planning Commission about the stormwater management areas not being fenced. They're not required to be fenced, but since Planning Commission, we've gone back in, you can see these little lines with the X's. That's a fence. So we've got fences now proposed around both of our stormwater management areas. That was a concern from the neighbors, you know, if kids were, were playing around, playing around the ponds. We will have a homeowners association that will be established for this, so they will be the ones that will be responsible for maintenance of the stormwater management, maintenance of that fencing, maintenance of any of the open space. One of the reasons we kept this house, you know, that it was, again, mentioned earlier, we could come in and demo the house and pick up another three or four lots. There's actually a family renting that house right now that wants to buy that house when the, you know, if this project moves forward. It, it's a nice house, it's got a lot of natural, you know, it's got a lot of nice trees up there, so we, we saw the benefit to keeping that house versus just tearing it down and, and building more, so we thought that was a benefit to the project to keep that up there. So that, that would be planned, you know, to stay there as lot, as Lot 53. We did have three proffers that we included in the, in the initial section of our, of our ordinance, and those are the same conditions as well with the conditional use permit, which is substantial conformance with the plan. It's only to be used for single-family detached residential use, that we would have two future road connections. And since our first Planning Commission meeting, we went back and adjusted those proffers to include that this stub road would be built and constructed in the first phase. That was one piece of it. The other piece that we added in is one of our neighbors, I believe it was Mr. Wilburn, who lives right here, I think, had asked about buffering, and, and again, Mr. Bradshaw brought that up earlier tonight as well. We do have buffer trees shown along this area, right here, outside of this one piece where we've got our public sewer that's coming through. We can't plant on top of the sewer line. So in, in closing, I wanted to just leave everybody with a few final thoughts. So the use we're requesting, a single-family residential subdivision with less than four units per acre, we're at 3.2, which is less than the four that's allowed by code, is in compliance with a comprehensive plan. Single-family detached home use is consistent with Summit Ridge. It's not townhomes, it's not apartments. The density of 3.2 acres, as I just said, is under the threshold of four. Our streets, our sidewalks, stormwater, utilities will be built to town standards. I didn't mention this earlier. There were two comments that were provided by town staff at the second Planning Commission meeting, that I believe Public Works had indicated there is no known impacts or concerns with the water or sewer systems in this area, and that the town staff had also done a review of Summit Ridge Road itself and determined it was in good to excellent condition. So those were a couple things that were brought up. Those were in the staff packet to Planning Commission. I'm sure you guys probably have a copy of that. So noted that here about the, those two points right here. The statewide fire prevention code is not applicable to new subdivision construction. This piece, I just want to harp on again, we are in short supply of housing. This is housing that can be affordable for those, as Mr. Bradshaw said, those step-up owners or first-time home buyers. These aren't, these are going to be residents of Christiansburg, so these are going to be neighbors of, of, of the neighbors here. These are people just like them. These are going to be young families, you know, these are going to be, you know, empty nesters. These are going to be young professionals. So I, I have a little bit of trouble as a citizen of Christiansburg, thinking as soon as we add new cars, we've got people speeding down the road, mowing over kids. You know, these are people that live here in our community and will be part of the Summit Ridge community. In 2005, I thought this was, I was thinking about this tonight before I came over here. In 2005, we designed Windsor Estates, and I moved And I moved into Windsor, one of the first homes that was built there and moved in. Now, I knew when Windsor was built out, that was going to be a major cut through from the whole, that whole section of Cambria there on the other side of the rec center to 114. We lived there for 13 years. I raised all three of my boys there. They learned how to ride their bikes, we trick-or-treated. People in town know how to drive in our subdivision streets, so I would just ask council to remember that and our neighbors to remember that. You know, we'll be, you know, we'll have folks that are living here, they don't want to be disrespectful to the neighbors that they're going to be moving in beside. The last piece, and this just came up yesterday, again, comes back to our housing in short supply. The, and Councilwoman Hicks may have seen this, the National Association of Realtors just released a statistic last week, and in the entire country, not in the state of Virginia, entire country, the largest percent gain in existing single-family home prices in Q4 of 2024, Blacksburg, Christiansburg, MSA was number nine. In the whole country, prices have increased 15% in the course of that year from Q4 to Q4. So that's existing home prices, not new home. So those are the homes that all these folks live in and I live in and you all live in. Those home prices have increased that much over this MSA, and what does that say? That says that our housing supply is too short, there's too much demand and not enough supply. So again, we feel like what we've provided here is not out of line, it's not out of character, it's not out of density, it's a compatible use with our neighbors in Summit Ridge, we're meeting the VDOT codes, we're not worried about meeting the fire code in this case because it's new construction. And we feel this is a really good project in an area that needs and is planned to have more residential development. And I'll end, I promise I'll end on this. I went back over the last two years, I believe, three years maybe, and the town engineering staff keeps a track online as far as the existing projects that are under review. We haven't had a brand-new subdivision. We've had a few phases, Kensington, for example, you know, that have kind of come online, but we haven't had a new subdivision and a new section of town in several years. Most of what we're seeing are townhomes and duplexes and, you know, apartments. So since the Venney subdivision, which was some patio homes and some patio homes, I believe, over near the bypass and the off-ramps, and that, those were several years ago, so we're at a little bit of a lack for single-family homes. And, you know, some of those other subdivisions that I was just mentioning, those are areas that we put smaller homes that weren't consistent with 1960s, 70s, 80s-style development, but we put them in, it was infill, and those projects are working well, the neighbors work well together. It's mixed housing. We can't do everything on half-acre lots and expect our housing stock to grow the way it needs to or for the pricing to stay in a position where, you know, folks can afford, you know, a home nowadays. Thank you.
Anyone else? I'll close this part of the public hearing. We will go on to the next, which is conditional use permit request by RWW4 property owner and applicant for planned housing development, Summit Ridge Road adjoining southwest side of 81. The property lines and descriptions have not changed. This is just the conditional use permit, which is a conditional, is an additional usage of, other than, or a request other than, would normally falls under R1. We have, I think, we have addressed this throughout. If there's anyone that would like to address the conditional use portion, please come forward.
Can you ask a question during it?
You should be able to have another minute.
Come on up, Dave. If you have a question.
I think we heard a lot of good information there, so I'll make it short. The fire code was never addressed. When do you look at in-and-outs of roads? How can you count five dots on a map when there's only one point in Summit Ridge? Summit Ridge is at the top of the hill next to the park. We just redefined what Mr. Reininger put into place, what, 50 years ago? I'm not even sure when that went in. That was a dead-end row that was never put there as a stub out. I would love to find the original plat. It ended at his driveway. He'd ran it up there and then it went out. So I don't know if there's a must-connect to that because it's not technically a stub out, I don't believe. But we never got the answer to the fire code of when and where is that addressed? If it's somewhere else in the building process, we would love to hear that and let us know that that's something that's real. And I'm sure I've got other questions, but I can't think of them off the top of my head. But still, in what we had, I'll ask you this question. Did you hear anything that addressed all the different things about the historic neighborhoods, all the continuity, all the stuff that relates to the existing subdivision or the different, the existing homes, to go in there to plot new homes? Did you hear anything that got around the comprehensive plan that said, we're going to mesh this in so that it matches what's there? We're not asking for 80s-style subdivisions. We're asking that you don't allow 60-foot frontages of homes next to each other, next to each other, next to each other. That's not the style of the neighborhood, and nothing that was said addressed those parts of the comprehensive plans or those parts of the ordinances. And we would like to get some answers to what those are.
Thank you, David. Anyone else to address the conditional use permit? Hearing none, I will close this portion of the public hearing. We have a conditional use request by Shaw Development LLC property owner and applicant to allow a two-family dwelling in the B3 general business of district property located at northeast corner of Renick Street and Craig Street. Tax parcel 527-46-B, consisting of approximately .319 acres. Property is designated as business commercial on the future land use map of the town of Christiansburg. Mr. Connor is here from Shaw. He had not planned to speak, but if there are questions concerning this particular plot, he'd be glad to answer. Do I have anyone here to address this portion of it? Ma'am, you stood up. Are you going to address it or are you going to leave? Thank you, ma'am. And I will close that portion of the public hearing. Our final public hearing is a conditional use request by Rockstep Christiansburg LLC property owner to allow a carnival from March 23rd, 2025 through April the 8th, 2025 on the property located at 782 New River Road Northwest. That is the Uptown Mall. Zoned B3 business. It proposed time period includes the setup and operations of the carnival. Property is designated as business commercial, future land use map, 2013, comprehensive plan. Anyone here to address this?
Good evening, council. I'll be very short and sweet. I'm Justin Cole with Cole Show's Amusement Company of Covington, Virginia. We're the carnival that has operated at Uptown Christiansburg every spring for the past few years. We look forward to coming back. We always enjoy our time in Christiansburg, and we appreciate your consideration. Thank you for having us, and I'd be happy to address any concerns you may have about this year's permit.
How many years have you been here? Just make your...
I believe we...
I'm thinking five.
Yeah, every year since COVID and maybe 2019 as well, I believe is correct.
Truly enjoy having you in the town. My kids will agree.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to address this particular item for the carnival? Hearing none, I will gladly close the public hearing for tonight. And you are welcome, I asked, we do have a pretty lengthy agenda, so on your way out, I would ask that you please allow us to continue business. If you have conversations, it's like you say in the bar, take it outside, folks. Thank you very much for coming, I appreciate it. Under the consent agenda, I'm going to give them a minute. I know, hell no. Seats in the town now. This might must be a free beer. Let's move it along, folks, please. Okay, we're getting there. Under the consent agenda, we have the approval of the minutes of February 11th, 2025, and February 19th, 2025. Approval of the bill list, award construction contractor Adams Construction Company in the amount of $589,540 for the construction of the annual paving project. Go ahead and close it, Scott. We do have another interest, that's all right. And we set a public hearing for Shaw Development LLC applicant and property owner to allow the single-family or two-family dwellings in the B3 general business district on property located on the western side of Plum Street across from Trent Street, parcel number 497-2-B, and consisting of approximately .776 acres. The property is designated as residential in the future land use map of the town of Christiansburg.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion second. Any comments or questions? Mr. Wilson, I can't see your hands or Casey's hands, but do you all have any comments or questions on this?
No comment.
Anyone else? Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hackett.
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilman Wilson.
Aye.
That is 6-0. Thank you very much. Under citizens' comments, this is the time that we ask, we allow citizens, if they'd like to come forward and address concerns and matters of the town, to come forward, to state your name and your address, and you're limited to three minutes, and please address your comments to the chair.
Real quick, sir, Steve Semenius, 1335 Cambria Street.
Can we please leave the, I'm so sorry, can we please leave the door open so it doesn't look like we're having a closed meeting?
We are not having a closed meeting.
I understand, I know.
I will run this meeting, Ms. Hicks. I ordered the door closed because of the comments and the conversation in the past. Thank you, Mr. Semenius.
Yes, sir. I just wanted to let council know if you all have any questions that you'd like to reach out to me about this last project, I'd be happy to answer and meet with you individually. Just wanted to let you know.
Thank you. Anyone else to address the town? I will close citizens' comments. Are there any committee reports? Mr. Bishop? I'm trying to think, I've seen you already here.
Oh, thank you. No reports, thank you.
Ms. Hicks?
I wanted to mention, I know that I wanted to speak during the rezoning thing or whatever. I have a COYA thing that I got to mention, but I was not given the chance to do so during the time. And I know, but I wanted to speak as well, so I felt like if I didn't do my COYA disclosure, I couldn't obviously speak, and I wanted to speak. So just to let you know that. Shall I be able to just say this because I don't, I didn't want to be part of the discussion in here and I have that conflict of interest? Can I still read it?
Do what? Do you bear? Go ahead, if you've got a comment, ready?
Okay, today's discussion involved rezoning in the town of Christiansburg and Summit Ridge Road. As many as you know, my spouse and I have properties on that area that, and because there will be more than obviously multiple houses that will be affected and different neighbors that will be affected, possibly affected, I want to disclose that we actually own property over there. I'm a member of group of three or more individuals who may be affected by that, therefore, in this situation, the exception to the Virginia State and Local Government Conflict of Interest Act, Virginia Code Section 2.2-3112B1 applies in compliance with that section. I hereby declare that I'm able to participate in the discussion and bordering on those topics fairly, objectively, and in the public interest.
Ms. Hackett?
Yes, Central Business Committee is going to meet next week. We're going to continue our discussions on the facade grant and appreciate council's feedback and inputs from the work session. And so, yeah, we'll be meeting next Wednesday at 4 o'clock here at Town Hall.
Very good. Mr. Wilson?
I have nothing to report.
Mr. Jenkins?
Nothing else to add.
Mrs. Bowman?
Nothing, thank you.
All right.
Can I add something to that, Tanya? Tanya, when you, I know that we're not in the hour session anymore, but I was thinking about something this week that maybe you guys may want to think about when you're looking into this, about the FASEA grants and stuff. Many of the FASEA grants that got granted, any, some money this year, or the applications, as a matter of fact, the majority of the applications that we got were actually not part of the map that you were looking at. So just so you can look into that as well.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Very good, very good. Town manager?
Nothing to report.
Town attorney?
Nothing to report.
Very good. Let's see, we've got no, we don't have any discussion and action by mayor and council. Staff reports we have none. Council reports, anything that's not covered earlier?
I would like to, I'd like to get an update on the audio. I know we spoke about that a couple of weeks ago, and we were waiting on some bids. Do you have any update on that?
We just received our third and the final one that we need quote for that. So Jay and I are discussing how to determine how best to move forward. Neither of us are audio experts, which is why we're hiring them, but I would hope that we would have a decision later this week or by next week on who we want to move forward with and action for you all at the next town council meeting.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, also, while I'm talking about meetings, I'd like to talk about meeting protocol again. I listened to the Planning Commission meeting, trying to prepare for tonight, and once again, I could hear the beginning of it very clearly, but in the end, we had some people who were not at the microphone, and it's very difficult for people to hear what's going on if we're not at the microphone. But I also had another incident where I was not here. I called in to a town council meeting, and I heard something on the microphone that it shouldn't have. A council person took the Lord's name in vain in a public meeting, and I do not think that's appropriate. I've had many complaints, and I personally don't appreciate that in public meetings. So I would like for that to be addressed.
Thank you. Anyone else? Other business. Ms. Hackett?
I'd like to request a closed meeting under Code of Virginia 2.2-3711A7 for consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body. For the purposes of this subdivision, probable litigation means litigation that has been specifically threatened or on which the public body or its legal counsel has a reasonable basis to believe will be commenced by or against a known party. Nothing in the subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public body is in attendance or is consulted on a matter. The closed meeting is being held for discussion of litigation in regard to the North Franklin Street-Cambria Street intersection and North Franklin Street corridor project by Allegheny Construction, Inc.
Set in the form of a motion?
Yes.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Discussion?
This is, this was Ashley brought up, I think. You were asking about the bills, right?
I did.
And I'm sure he had nothing to do with reading.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Inline?
Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Excuse me. Councilwoman Bowman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hackett.
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilman Wilson.
Aye.
That is 6O.
I'd like to make a motion to request a closed meeting under Code of Virginia 2.2-3711A7 consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body. For the purposes of this subdivision, probable litigation means litigation that has been specifically threatened or on which the public body or its legal counsel has a reasonable basis to believe will be commenced by or against a known party. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney is representing the public body is in attendance or is consulted on a matter. Additionally, the closed meeting is also under Code of Virginia 2.2-3711A8 for consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public body is in attendance or is consulted on a matter. The closed meeting is being held for discussion of litigation in regard to collection of delinquent meals taxes, business, personal property taxes, penalties, and interest.
Second. Motion and a second. Any comments, questions? Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hackett.
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilman Wilson.
Aye.
Thank you. We're going to take about a three-minute break, and then we'll come back in.